Hi.
Morning, John.
Good morning.
First of all, on behalf of the board, we got three missing this morning. You know, Commissioner Presley had a total shoulder replacement last Thursday. So, we won't see him for a while.
I hope he's doing better.
And I don't even think he's in shape now for Zoom. I haven't talked to him with his wife, you know, his call. Brownie had a, he'll probably be in. And Jasmine, you know how this is, they had problems when because of COVID. She'll be late coming in. They're changing with the kids. But you've got the rest of us, so we're fine.
Yeah.
But I want to welcome you and thank you for stepping up to the plate and volunteering, John, for the planning board. Because one of the problems that I've seen in the four years I've been on the commission is getting good people to step up. And we've been fortunate though in the last few months, it's worked. And I'll start off because all of us, we have 10 minutes, we'll try to hold that. We'll ask you questions. And the first one I'm going to ask is pretty simple. Why did you apply?
So, it's a great question. I applied mainly because I have, I work professionally in this area. And after so many years of seeing how the, the, the planning work that's done years in advance of the cases that I take then impacts the community as well as the developers and the property owners in zoning cases that I get involved with. I wanted to take the opportunity, since the county's thinking about its UDO, is redoing its planning documents in order to better reflect the realities for Buncombe County, to offer my experience in shaping that as we move forward as a community. So, that's, that's the main reason.
And Commissioners, please, I did one thing. As you ask your questions, please introduce yourselves. I didn't, John, I'm sorry, but we've known each other for a long time.
For just a little while, yeah.
Yeah, a little while now.
Thanks, John. I'll, we'll just kind of go down the line. We're going to attempt to ask everybody the same questions.
Okay.
Get that similar feedback. So, Parker Sloan, District Three, thanks for volunteering to, to serve on a, on a public board and serve your community. As you know, our community is growing rapidly and has been for some time. And so, I wanted to ask you what, to respond to a, to a phrase, and that's responsible growth. And, and what does that, what does that concept or phrase mean to you?
Responsible growth. So, for me, it's one of those things that I think is aspirational because depending on who you ask in the context, you're going to get a different answer. I, I have developer clients that are looking to build businesses and develop properties that think responsible development might look one way. And then I have community clients that may look at the same project and say that it doesn't meet their definition of that. And so, I think when we're talking about responsible development, it's, it's blending priorities from groups that may not agree in general in trying to make sure that we have environmental protections that are necessary to protect our community as a whole in our development scheme, that we're being mindful of where our growth, where we want our growth to be in a community into the future, not just in the present. And we're trying to balance the inclusivity that a community member might want in a decision making process against the needs for property owners and developers in order to have clear rules to follow so that they know what they need to do when they're bringing in a project. And I think it's really hard to, to necessarily hit that every time, but I think that's the aspiration in whether we're doing our planning documents or the procedural process that might go on for a decision make, the decision making application. I kind of wrap all of that up into responsible development. And if that, I, I hope that answers your question. It's, is more general, but I think that's kind of what we're talking about when we're talking about planning documents is what are we generally trying to achieve? And then we get into the details with different components of that plan.
Thanks.
Hello, John, I'm Terry Wells, and I serve with Mr. Whitesides for District One. And thanks for being here with us today. And with my question, you've answered part of it, but if you want to just kind of go ahead and share some more details with this. So, what do you believe your role is as a community volunteer on a board such as this? As well as what specific skills and experience will you be able to contribute?
Absolutely. So, you know, I think the role on a planning board like this is, one, is we're providing advice for the Commissioners. You know, so the, whether it's in, in revising a plan, it's an advisory type capacity. And so, when I think, one of our most important roles is, is to be helpful to the Commissioners, to understand your priorities for development and then make sure that we're serving in the best way we can for the decisions that you all will ultimately have to make. And I think I've done that before with the city in my role on SASE. And, and I think that helps understand that, you know, it's, it's different once you're on a board than when you're an advocate either for the community or in the community. And so, I think that requires, you know, trying to hold disagreeable positions together to try and understand what that might look like as a compromise. And then also being willing to listen to lots of different folks and different positions on this. And again, trying to marry those different, sometimes inconsistent priorities that you hear in order to get a product that's best for the Commissioners. And forgive me, I'm forgetting the second part of your question, if you don't mind asking it again.
Well, that was, that was plenty of answer there, but also it was just any specific skills and experience.
Skills and experience. I, I would again go back to, you know, as an attorney who represents both developers and community groups in development and zoning decisions, I think that's the experience at this point, is, is I've been able to see it from both sides. I understand what the different groups are expecting and wanting when they walk into, whether it's a rezoning or conditional zoning or a, a planning process, which is really what the, the, the planning board is for versus the Board of Adjustment that handles those other issues. But I, I think it's given me perspective that a lot of people just don't see because normally folks don't think about zoning until it happens to them, I think is the way they feel about it. All of a sudden, this just came upon me and now I have, have to respond to it.
Hi, John, Amanda Edwards, District Two, it's nice to see you.
See you.
You've mentioned several times about working with groups who have differing priorities and bringing them together. How would you approach, if you were selected to be on the planning board, bringing groups together with different priorities to make the best decision for Buncombe County?
So, I, I think one of the ways to understand, to bring groups together is to understand what their priorities are. So, for example, with my developer clients, predictability tends to be a really, really important quality for them. Because what they say is, I want to know what I've got to do before I go in, before I commit myself to the financing that I'm going to have to secure for this project. How long is it going to take me? And, and where are the potential roadblocks? If I know those things, I can plan around them in order to develop or put out a product that meets the boxes that I'm going to be asked to check. I love that. And that's a really big and important priority for them. On the other side with community groups, what I hear is, I want to be heard. I want to make sure that they're thinking about all the realities that are going to impact my life with this development proposal. And I don't see those as inconsistent priorities. I see those as things that you have to plan in at different parts of the process. So, for developers, it might be very, be very clear in our planning documents about what's going to be expected of you if that's their number one or number two priority in a document and making sure we achieve that. And with community groups, it may be making sure that our process is very fair so that not only did we plan well in the document, but when the decision has to be heard, while they may not necessarily agree with the outcome, they feel that they were heard in a way that was meaningful and that they can respect the outcome of that decision because of that process. And I think those are two obviously different priorities, but if you can marry, if you, if you're able to achieve people's top goals in the same document, I, I think that's how you bring people together because they may not agree on, okay, what is the standard for stormwater that we want to put on this size, these sized buildings? But that's how you can integrate different priorities into the same document. And if that answers your question.
It absolutely does, thank you, John.
John, do you have any question you would like to ask us? What do you have?
I did have one that had kind of come up. I know that the commission is thinking about a kind of task force for the UDO and for the planning document in, in general, the comprehensive plan. And so, I will just ask or kind of throw out there, that might be a better place for me than the planning board. I'll just say that as you're thinking about what you're trying to do. And the reason I offer that is ultimately, having been in so many of these cases, I want to really be able to dig into the work that's going to go into the revisions to the comprehensive plan and ultimately the UDO, wherever you see that being housed. And obviously, the, I applied to the planning board because that's where it goes. I mean, you do all this planning, goes to the planning board, they provide input and then they make a recommendation to you all and you all make the amendments. But if you're actually seeing that process working differently where you think the heavy lifting is really going to be done on the task force and that the planning board is going to more accept that recommendation with some tweaks, maybe that's a better spot for me. I think to just be, to better understand what you all may be thinking about that would be my question. And then to say ultimately, my hope is to be where the hard work is versus the board and whatever that means. So, yeah.
Well, you know, the way I would look at it, John, of course, I'm just one member. And I would think if we're going to have a community task force to look at it, we would have at least one or two representatives from the planning board on that too.
And that might be a good way to meld and give extra work to everyone.
Yeah.
And I think that maybe Parker, I think we may have been on an email there. They're in the process of deciding how that's going to look.
Right.
And the process for it. I don't think we've heard yet, have we?
No, we haven't.
That, yeah, that leaves us with a good question in terms of.
Right.
Not just how do we form that committee, but what is its relationship with the planning board?
You've got it.
Not a question I know the answer to, so.
We don't.
Yeah.
And I, just maybe as a second question, is there anything in particular that, as you think about the comprehensive plan issue generally issue wise that, that is important for your different districts that you'd want to have particular emphasis focused on that might not be publicly known that I could read or, or know about? No, it puts you on the spot, but.
I think as we get into that, and we will have consultants working with the zoning act, I'm sure, John, that's going to come out. Because when you look at the three different districts, you know, City of Asheville, District One, we have no other than the South, you know, it will be, I'm sure we'll get input there from everybody. And you know, we have different concerns, but it'll all come together hopefully for the county. We'll be represented, everybody.
Yeah.
I agree. I think when it comes to that, I don't want to speculate where I think people's directions and concerns are going to be. I want to just sit back and listen and hear from them versus putting out what I may think right now are the biggest issues to be addressed. I really want to let the residents of Buncombe County come forward and express those as we're going through that process. It's really important just to, to sit back and listen and let them be heard.
Well, I'd like to thank you for stepping up, as I said. And we'll be making the decision tonight.
Okay.
At our board meeting. And we have three vacancies for the planning board, so we hope to fill all three.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John.
Yeah. Take care. No, we haven't decided that with the task force, we'll have some everybody to help with.
I'm just emailing Nate right now, I'm going to CC you guys, see what he thinks.
Yeah.
About the, like, even just long term, would the comp plan be finished and then go to the planning board for review and then us? Or?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, yeah.
We did an email consent, said that they have a meeting coming up where they were going to get some work done. So, you'd think that they.
Yeah.
That should be coming forward soon. Oh, yeah, sure, so this is Anthony Coxey.
Hello, isn't sure.
Hey, good morning. Welcome.
Sorry, to volunteer, to step up, to, to community service. But we do have, last few months, it's really improved. And to start with, I'm Al Whitesides, I'm Vice Chair of the Board, I represent District One. And we are missing three this morning, the Chair, he has a conflict, he couldn't make it. And another Jasmine Beach Fair from District Two, she has a conflict. And from District Three, Commissioner Presley had a total shoulder replacement. So, unfortunately, he'll be out for a few weeks. But we are here to conduct the interview and, which we're looking forward to. And to start with, I'll ask the first question. And all of us will be in, the Commissioners will be in and asking you questions. But I would just like to ask, why did you volunteer for this, apply?
Well, I'm an attorney and public service is just a big part of what I do. I was with the Asheville Fire Department for about 15 years before I went to law school. In 2018, I finished completing my MPA. And one of the things I'd like to do is learn a little more about land use and planning and such. I did a couple projects on planning through Buncombe County when I was doing my MPA at Chapel Hill. So, this seems like a nice progression for me. And then I have experience with quasi judicial boards. I was on the Civil Service Board for about eight years and was Vice Chair and Chair there as well. So, I'm just looking for experience and seeking to learn.
Good.
Thanks, Anthony. Quick question, what's your, what's your bachelor's degree in?
My bachelor's at UNC Asheville, Senate Management.
Awesome, okay.
I don't believe I did a resume, I have that if y'all need that.
Just an impressive resume and application, so I just wanted to ask off the top of, of my head. But I'm Parker Sloan, Commissioner District Three. Thanks for, for coming in today and for being willing to serve your community. It's fantastic, you applied. I just wanted to ask one question. As you know, our community is growing rapidly and has been for some time. So, I just wanted to ask you to respond to a, to a phrase, responsible growth and planning for responsible growth. And just wanted to ask you what that concept means to you?
I think the concept of responsible growth is kind of a, for lack of a better term, it's a government seeded issue. I think counties and cities have to look at how they're doing things and make sure they're complying with the law, complying with their ordinances and looking to improve their ordinances in ways that help a community grow and do so in ways where property owners aren't pitted against each other, where things are smooth and transitions are, are easy. You, you can get kind of out of whack and have, you know, one project against another project and that's not responsible. So, I think smooth transitional growth is probably the goal.
Thank you.
Hello, Anthony, I'm Terry Wells, I'm the Commissioner for District One along with Commissioner Whitesides.
Good morning.
And I'm doing fine, and you?
Thanks.
So, my question is, so what do you believe your role is as a community volunteer serving on a board for the county? And also, what specific skills and experience will you bring and be able to contribute?
I think my role is like any board member, and that's to listen and learn and try to do the process that exists and improve the process and be a good caretaker for the process. I've been an attorney now for 21 years. I've served on the City of Asheville on some of their boards. And so, I understand board service and the time and the commitment it takes to do that. I've been a lifelong resident of Buncombe County, so I'm familiar with our area and Buncombe County and how it's grown through the decades. So, I believe that natural history probably serves me too when it comes to considering new projects.
Hi, Anthony, Amanda Edwards, District Two, it's nice to see you.
Nice to meet you, ma'am.
You mentioned in one of your responses about not pitting homeowners and property owners against each other with, I'm assuming developers. How, how would you bring differing groups with maybe competing interests and differing interests together to compromise?
I don't know that you can always seek perfect unity on every project, but I think you can try. I think you can always find common points of interest that you can bring people along with and you can carefully figure out what the issues are, try to address them in a way that it works for all people. I mean, I think that's your goal is to try to work a project where issues are resolved and the community agrees upon it. And so, I think it's just a matter of due diligence and working hard to try to, to try to get there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, that ends the questions we have for you. Do you have any you'd like to ask us?
Not at this time. I've read all the materials, I've read your website and everything and just look forward to the opportunity, sir.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank you again for coming out. And we will be making the decisions tonight, the decision tonight on the appointment of three.
Okay.
That we're filling. So, if, once as a result of that, our clerk will be contacting you.
Okay.
After tomorrow, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh huh. We appreciate you coming out and thanks for the, your service.
You're welcome, Your Honor, sir.
You know, he's well educated. He's not a bad person.
If our client weren't back to school.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, well.
Morning, how y'all doing?
Good morning, Michael, and thank you for applying. We appreciate it. It's, you know, it's always good to see our constituents come forward, you know, for community service and to help. And in the past, I've told before that this has been a problem getting good people to apply.
Right.
But we've seen that change in the last, say, year or so. So, thank you. I'm Al Whitesides, I'm Vice Chair of the Board, I represent District One. Our Chair cannot, he has a conflict, Brownie Newman, he's not here. We have Commissioner Presley from District Three who's not with us because he had a total shoulder replacement. So, we think he'll be out for a few weeks.
Yeah.
At least. And Jasmine Beach Fair from District Two, she had a, has a conflict, but she should be in. But you have, you still have the majority of us here, so.
That sounds great, fine.
And what we'll do, each one of us, we have a question to ask you, and then at the end, if you have any to ask us, you can.
Okay.
And I'll start off with a simple one, really. Why did you apply?
Well, I've been living in Buncombe County since I've been 12 years old. I moved from Gastonia. My father got transferred up here. And the county's been good to me and I figured it would be my due diligence lead to give the things right back to it. I was on the Board of Crime Stoppers. And for the past two years, before we disbanded a couple of months ago, I was Chairperson of it and worked with Van Duncan, real close with him in, in that. And I just enjoy trying to devote myself to the county and helping people out.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Michael. I'm Parker Sloan, Commissioner District Three. Thanks for coming in and, and for being willing to serve, that's really great. As you know, since you've been here a while, that our community is growing rapidly and changing quickly. And, and so, one, one thing I try to think about a lot is, is how to plan for, for growth responsibly. And so, I wanted to ask you, you know, what does that, that phrase or concept mean to you, responsible growth?
Yes, responsible growth, we just, we just got to kind of watch what we need to do. I know we're a small county and everything and we're running out of space. We're not never going to make everybody happy. But we try to do it the best way we can in the economic part. I know if you build like a subdivision or something like that, that's going to put pressure on different other places like the utilities. The community wants to, you know, give their knowledge or their input on any new constructions going on, which I can understand. You know, I guess I wouldn't want a big high rise sitting in my backyard, but with the way things, with the way that we're growing and in the years, we do have to kind of slow it down a little bit. But then again, we need to kind of look and see what we got going on, as in what the county needs and what would help it, help the county out.
Great, thank you.
Hello, Michael, I'm Terry, hey, I'm Terry Wells, I'm Commissioner District One along with Mr. Whitesides. And I was curious, what do you believe your role is as a community volunteer on a board? And also, what are some of your specific skills and experience that you want to contribute to this board?
Well, some of my knowledge is, I've been mechanic for, since I was 13 years old, worked in construction for several, several years. I did, worked as a high voltage lineman for 10, 10 to 15 years. And right now, I'm working at the Biltmore Estate with Electrical Engineer through them and also do part-time work for Home Depot as a tool rental tech. I've done, like I said, I've done just about anything from gas to electric to anything. And as far as what I was, what my, I just, just, I guess I just kind of like to volunteer with, see what my input would be, to see where I can go from here and then we can see what else we can get done.
Hi, Mr. Fisher, I'm Amanda Edwards, District Two, thanks for being here with us today.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your genuine love of living here in Buncombe County and giving back. You did mention that you can't always make everyone happy in these decisions. So, I'm curious how you approach when you have two different, you know, two opposing groups? How do you, how do you work towards conflict resolution?
Really, what we just need to do is just sit and kind of listen to each side, weigh what we need to do and, and try to come to a good compromise at the way we need to go to make the solution feasible for everybody and to make everybody as happy as we can. Like I said, I mean, you're not going to have all the answers, but you try your best to do what you think is right and to apply whatever you need to, whatever rules and regulations we need to, we just need to apply them the way we can.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Beach Fair, do you have a question?
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to hear the responses, I think my questions have been covered.
Okay. Well, thank you again for stepping up, as I said earlier. And before you leave, do you have any questions you'd like to ask us?
No, sir, I believe we've done, covered it all, I believe.
Okay.
But I appreciate all y'all's help and assistance and kind of listening to. I appreciate all y'all's help and assistance and kind of listening to them.
Well, thank you, and we will be making the decision tonight to fill three slots on the planning board.
Yes, sir.
And our clerk will get back with you on our decision by tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank y'all a lot.
Uh huh. Thank you. Hi. Good morning, Byron.
How are you?
Great, fine.
Good.
And I'm Al Whitesides. I'm from District One, Vice Chair of the Board. Brownie couldn't be with us, the chair. He has a conflict.
Okay.
And also Commissioner Presley, he would love to be here, but he just had a total shoulder replacement.
Oh, I had that done once before.
So you know, he will be out for a few weeks. Yeah, he, he's not even up to being on Zoom right now. So the rest of us, we're, you know, filling in, and we're just glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You know, it's been, the last year, we've been fortunate, but when I first became a commissioner, we were having trouble getting good people to step up, you know, for the different boards and commissions. But that's changed now. And I'll start, I'll start off with the questions, and my first question is simple. Why did you apply?
I think I have a lot to offer, our Commissioner Whitesides. I've been on lots of boards for 45 years. I spent most of my time with the city of Asheville. I'd like to learn a lot more about Buncombe County. I've worked with Nate, and I've worked with Brownie for many years. I'm a full-time Realtor, past board, president of the Realtors Board. And so I'm in zoning and planning every day. I'm also a good listener, and I think I can make good decisions based on listening to both sides of the equation. And that's pretty much proven itself over the years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Byron. Parker Sloan, Commissioner in District Three. Thanks for coming in today and volunteering to serve your community. As you know, our, our community is growing rapidly and changing quickly. And so one concept I think about a lot in this context is planning responsibly for growth. And so I wanted to ask you to respond to that, that concept and phrase and see what responsible growth means to you.
Well, I, I think the community needs a roadmap, and that's part of the planning process. And of course, Buncombe County's had a history of people not wanting any kind of zoning, any kind of restrictions. So I think educating people on the needs for a specific plan so that we can have smart growth, so that we're not overbuilding, but we're building in a smart, smart way. And to understand the needs of the demand of housing and all those things that go with it is part of that whole process. So I think education's a big component of that, but I think a plan that's in place, that's communicated to the constituency and adopted is very important for smart growth.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Byron. I'm Terry Wells, Commissioner for District One, along with Commissioner Whitesides. And it sounds like you have a lot of experience on boards. And so what do you believe your role is as a community volunteer on a board? As well as, if you want to elaborate on some specific skills and experience, you've already talked about that some. But if there's some other ones you'd like to share with us as well, we'd love to hear that.
Well, I, I think one of the main things in your roles and in the roles on a commission is the ability to listen attentively, to see what the issues are, to sort through the issues, and to listen to both sides and to make good decisions. So I think that's, that's the primary thing. But you also need to take advice from those. So the role, to get back to that, is you have hired experts that guide you and give you opinions on the way things should go, and you make decisions based on that, marrying in the community's input. So it's, it's a balance, and I've worked, I've learned that process through all the years of working with municipalities to understand the role of staff, and then the, the role of the actual committees and the commissioners in your agenda. Because your agenda sets pretty much everything, so you have to fall in line with that master plan. Sure.
Hi, Byron. Amanda Edwards, District Two. Thanks for being with us this morning.
Thank you.
In this role, there are often conflicts between competing interests. How do you go about conflict resolution and getting folks on the same page?
The way I approach my real estate business is what we call a win-win. And we look for parts, not everybody gets everything they want when you're negotiating. And I negotiate deals all the time, every day. So you're listening to what are the key components of what that party is looking to accomplish. And you try to marry those two together. You're, and you have to go with gut, and you also have to go with guiding principles when you make that decision. Because not everybody's going to be happy with the outcome, and you have to be okay with that. But if you can add components of each side's wishes and wants into the ultimate decision, I think you have buy-in, even though they may not be happy with the end result.
Thank you.
Sure.
And, well, that's the end of our questions. Do you have any you'd like to ask us?
No, I pretty much have studied, you know, the role of it. You know, this isn't something that's new to me in terms of the way that the processes work and the commitments that are involved, and the learnings and the extra time that's involved. But I do see a really, you know, the affordability in our area is definitely in Buncombe County. The city has become unaffordable. A while back, when, when the city made a ban on short-term rental, I was a downtown advocate on one side as the president of the Downtown Association, and I was a Realtor on the other side. And that was, I was right in the middle of that. And so, so the end result was they put a ban into place, and now we're trying to get that relaxed. And we've got the state legislature helping us with that. But I, I think, I think that, those are situations that I find myself in. And I enjoy the figuring it out to make it work. But, you know, what Realtors are about, and you've probably heard this from other Realtors if you've interviewed them, is about property rights. And so I'm big on property rights, as long as it's within the ordinances, the zoning and the planning. And as I said, I'm a consensus builder, and I like to look for a win-win. So that's, so as far as the controversy goes, you know, as I said, not everybody's going to get what they want. But if you're listening to both sides and giving them some of what they want, I think they have some buy-in. So I'm excited about it. I'd really like to learn way more about the way Buncombe County functions. And as I said, I've worked with Nate when he was at the city, and I've worked with him since he's been with the county. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you. And I would like to say that we will be making the decision this evening, our meeting, on the three slots or the three openings we have on the planning board.
Awesome.
And our clerk will follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you. Pleasure to see everybody.
Uh huh. Take care. Good to see you.
Thanks.
Lamar, I've got a question for, are you going somewhere? Yeah, yeah. I know that, we got, we got the districts labeled on here for each applicant, but some of the, some of the members on the board are at large, and some are by district, right? Or is it, or is it by school district?
There is no requirement of, to be appointed by district. We put the district here for the commissioners' reference if they want to appoint by district. But there is no, at one point in time, there were requirements to do it by school district. But with the, having communications with the legal department and pulling up the last modification of that planning board ordinance, that is no longer a part of the requirements.
Okay. I seem to recall, I know I was appointed like six years ago at large, so that's probably meaningless. But I think a few months ago, we appointed people based on school.
We can speak to that later, but yeah, we'll get up to date on that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Matthew.
How are you?
And welcome. I'm Al Whitesides. I represent District One, and I'm Vice Chair of the Board. And this morning, we are interviewing for planning board. And unfortunately, we do, we're missing two of our commissioners. The Chair, Brownie Newman, has a conflict. And Robert Presley, who would rather be with us, but he's recovering from a total shoulder replacement. So he'll be under the weather for a few weeks, probably. And so the rest of us, we carry on, you know, yet. And what I would like, I'll start off by asking you a simple question. Why did you apply?
Okay. Interested in land use development, how land in the county is used, what decisions go into that. It may seem like a very general answer, but that truly is, in a nutshell, why I was interested.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Matthew. Thanks for being willing to volunteer your time today and to serve on a public board. My name's Parker Sloan, Commissioner with District Three.
Nice to meet you.
And, and one thing I think about a lot in this context is, is how our community is growing rapidly and how best to plan responsibly for the growth we're having. And so I wanted to ask you to respond to that, that concept, responsible growth. What does that mean to you?
Whew. It, it's a tough one, you know, because I, I think, hmm, acknowledging affordable housing issues while balancing that with perhaps the, the fact that we are a community that, I guess, benefits from things like short-term rentals and things like that. So I guess the reason I, I immediately addressed two hot-button issues, they seem diametrically opposed. But I think looking at both of those issues and coming up with a solution that doesn't necessarily exclude them and make them mutually exclusive would be just one example of how I would look at an issue like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Matthew. I'm Terry Wells, Commissioner, District One.
Hi.
Thanks for being with us today. What do you believe your role is as a community volunteer on a board like this? And also, what specific skills and experience would you like to contribute to that board?
I, I teach real estate classes. I have some basic working knowledge, very basic. You know, and I don't presume at all to know all the ins and outs of determining whether, you know, we should approve a subdivision, but I at least kind of know the process, generally speaking, of what goes into that. You know, appropriate land use for a zoning district, when maybe a variance would be granted, when to maybe expand or loosen a use permanently via an amendment. So I guess I come in with, again, at least a basic knowledge of how that process works and what should be considered when making those sort of decisions.
Hi, I'm Amanda Edwards, District Two.
Hi.
In this role, there are often competing interests and folks that are not seeing eye to eye and agreeing with each other. How do you go about getting folks on the same page and conflict resolution?
Well, and I, I, you know, I kind of tried to, I guess, drop a bombshell in the whole affordable housing versus short-term rentals by just pointing out, again, the elephant in the room on an issue like that. Again, I, I like to try and come, and I work at the Realtor Association. This has been an ongoing discussion. You know, I came on after the city ordinance, but this is obviously something that is not going away, right? Either of those issues. So my, my approach is always to say, let's try and demystify, I guess, some of the boogeyman on, on those issues. Let's look at what's positive and what we can actually accomplish when it comes to affordable housing, what, what data we actually have on, on short-term rentals and how they may or may not impact something like affordable housing. Bring together, I guess, arguments on either side of both for and against those sort of hot-button issues. So again, I don't, I don't know if I answered that totally well, but try and gather as much data as possible instead of anecdotal.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. That's all of our questions, but before you leave, do you have any questions you'd like to ask us?
I would love to be involved in this. I'm just genuinely curious about time commitment. What, what does it usually look like? Just, and again, that doesn't mean I'm worried about the time commitment by any means. I'm just, you know, I've heard other people say they've been, you know, worked on these sort of boards and are in this capacity. And I'm just curious how that, it would compare to those working on the planning board.
I defer to Commissioner Sloan here, since he served on the plan.
Oh, okay.
I served on the planning board for six years and then ended up here, so be careful. Watch your back.
I need to be a little bit more polished before I even presume to be in here.
Yeah, it, last time I checked, they still meet twice a month, Monday mornings.
Okay.
It depends on the agenda, you know, and sometimes we didn't have meetings because there wasn't anything on, on the agenda. That was more so when I began during the end of the recession. And these days, we're, we're growing like gangbusters, so, so there's lots of applicants and plans to review. And then, you know, we're starting a comprehensive plan process. So I would expect the planning board, short-term or long-term or both, to be involved in that process as well. I think we would love to get the feedback from the planning board members. So all that to say is, the monthly commitment, I think, would vary. And I think we're gonna get all the, all the mileage we can out of the planning board in the next year and a half with this, you know, once-in-a-decade comprehensive.
No, that's exciting. Yeah, I noticed the timeline on that, so.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And before you leave, we will be making the decision tonight on the three slots, and our clerk will be following up tomorrow with all of them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You know, we've had some good people for this. Parker, I've been pleased with the, at least with five good candidates.
Yeah. Okay.
Now, let me ask you a question on the next one. Will we end up appointing both of these?
That was communication that we were going to have with the board. We, the last meeting, there was some conversation about somebody on the Historic Resources Commission that was no longer attending the meetings. And by recommendation, and I want to clarify this, the city sent some information because they listened to the meeting by recommendation of the board and not necessarily by city staff, but it was by the board of the Historic Resource Commission and their policy that they wanted to have this person no longer be a part of that board. We reached out and tried to communicate with this individual. I think Commissioner Whitesides also reached out and tried to, tried to have a conversation to no avail. We weren't able to communicate with this person. We did send an email following up and stating that this person would be removed. So it would be up to the board if they would like to appoint for the position that was advertised and for the position that this person no longer will be in for the Historic Resources Commission. So that can be something that can be addressed during the meeting, the regular meeting tonight, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what we found out, the Jim Coleman that I called was not, but the one that we talked about was. but the one that we talked about was his cousin. They have the same name, White. But he is retired, and Jim didn't even know where he is. So, you know, I think it would be, you know... That's the one we're looking for, probably, because the other one lived in Chelmsford, I mean, Chuns Cove. Yeah. Yeah. But he retired either from the city or county. I'm not sure. It appears that since he retired, he just dropped out. Okay. Good, good.
Well, maybe you'll have more success because we tried to reach out and the Historic Resources Commission and the city staff, I think, both tried to reach out and didn't have any success with the response. And Commissioner Sloan, I think we were having a conversation about the Planning Board. At one point in time, the Planning Board was a requirement to be appointed by districts, by school districts. That is no longer the case. I do, like I said, there was communications between the Planning Board, the legal department, and the clerk's office. As of, let me see, it was around the beginning of March.
Okay.
And the ordinance that took precedent did not have districts as a requirement for those. And prior to that, there was probably some miscommunication and information that was not relevant or, I guess, not attended to at the time. But there no longer are requirements for districts in the Planning Board.
Okay. So until further notice, we can appoint folks who live wherever?
Correct. And if the board would like to have, to see that ordinance, I think it was passed in 2016, I could send that out to everybody because I do have it and it was within communications, like I said, with legal department, so.
And I have a follow-up question about that, too. Since we can appoint anyone, it would still be nice to know kind of our current board members where that, which districts, because I do feel that we need to get some...
Make sure everybody's represented.
Make sure that we have representation from the different districts. So that would be useful information when we're making, making these appointments as well.
Maybe even to add to that, Commissioner District and School District, just because the Commissioner Districts are pretty wild. Where they go, I don't know, because that's what I would like to know, just kind of...
That's a good point, because we really want to make sure that we do have some representation throughout the county, that not everybody's, that our appointings in one area.
So what we can do, the information that we have in our database, we can get that information to you. I think we at least have the district. I don't know if we have the school district for everybody, but we can try to get that information for you.
If you have the district and the address, probably, right, we can figure out.
If you got the zip code, yeah, we can know.
I don't know, something.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point to know who's on there now, it's like, kind of.
Yeah.
Okay, Darren Waters has not shown up. I called with him a message, Sue had not shown up. But I called with her a message and she just called me, she was at City Hall, so she's running over here right now.
That's pretty good, she's City Hall. Oh Darren, we've got, they've got to hurry up because we've got the 12:30 pre-teen. You got housing, huh? Oh, I can see how she ended up at City Hall, this is a joint commission, yeah, yeah. She didn't know where to go. I don't know where Darren is.
Um, I think they, they liked it, so we'll go. Or, but I don't think there's any meetings in there, I was taking them to.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I've been to every building in this quadrant. Here?
Yes.
Okay. Can I take, can I take my mask off? Yes, no, I'm fully vaccinated, okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you for stepping up. I'm Al Whitesides, Vice Chair of the Board, and we understand how you made the mistake because this is a joint commission. We have, you know, both sides, city appoints some and so do we, so we understand that. And what we'd like to do today is we didn't, you have all the commissioners, I'm Vice Chair of the Board from District One, and we have five of us here.
Okay.
And we'll be asking you, you know, questions. And the Brownie, our Chair of the Board, is, he had a conflict. And Robert Presley, who is from District Three, is not with us because he would like to be here much better, he would much rather be here than recuperating from a total shoulder replacement.
Ooh, yeah.
So he'll be out of pocket for a few weeks, I'm sure. But what I'll do, we'll start off, I'll just ask you the question is, why did you apply? I've seen where you have excellent credentials for this, yeah.
I, I applied because it looks like a really good fit for things that I love and, and wanting to serve. My love of architecture and history and knowledge, I thought would be a good fit. As a, a person who's lived in Asheville for a few years, I'd like to keep it growing and beautiful. So this looked like the ideal place.
Okay, well, let's get to Terry's.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Terry Wells, I'm a Commissioner in District One, and it's nice to meet you, thanks for being with us today. And you obviously have extensive experience, and I'm, I'm curious, like, what do you believe your role is as a community volunteer on a board? And also, are there some specific skills and experience that you really want to highlight, that you feel passionate about and you think particularly relate to what you would hope to be involved with and accomplish on this board?
As far as volunteering, my volunteering recently is, and I'm leaving here and going to help vaccinate people. I've been vaccinating up and not personally giving shots, but standing there with the doctor. I also volunteer on a research committee for a group in Chicago that is looking at a history of a religious organization, which that is an architectural, but I, it gets, it gives me intellectual exercise to dig in. And I think as far as projects that I would enjoy here, I, I like to look for a balance between what will work for the beauty of the building and also how it's used. And I also like to be in the middle of things that are being discussed and try to be a little bit of a balance person. That's sort of, I've had some skill at doing that, so we'll see if that continues. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I have a quick question. Hi, I'm Dazzy Beach for our representing District Two, thanks so much for all the work you're doing in our community. Can you briefly tell us about one of their favorite projects you've ever worked on?
Okay, I can give you two. One was in graduate school designing a pier for the city, a small coastal city in California. So my, me and my partner got to work with the city and try to, they didn't, they had a pier that had been knocked down by SURF, so we had kind of an open, it was kind of fun. So we got, it wasn't built, but it was a project. And so trying to balance the beauty of the structure with what the city needed and also to bring it up a little bit because they'd had some problems with the past construction and having people come down there because it was kind of not appealing as it should have been. So that was one. A second project that I really loved was researching, I, I do love to do research in things. And when I was in undergraduate school and I worked for Wayne Donaldson, we were redoing the Gaslamp District in San Diego, and, you know, that was really fun, walking to work because it was very much a derelict area and watching that transform as we figured out, like, we tried to save as many buildings as we could and to bring business back to that area because they had left because of, as it slid downhill. So those were two of my favorites.
Thanks for being with us this morning, Dr. Oliver, I'm Amanda Edwards, District Two.
Hello.
I'm intrigued, one of the comments that you had in your application is acknowledging and expanding landmarks from the past to show an equitable city. Tell us a little bit more about how you would use your role on this commission and looking through a lens of equity.
Well, I think because part of my graduate school, looking at race relations and trying to hear all voices, is, I think, a way to approach as Asheville goes into the next century to make sure that her history and the people that are here are respected. And if we have a building that has a history, that that gets reflected if we can somehow in her new use or its new use. And I think that's listening a lot. I find that that's really helpful to hear people out and to try to communicate across the board so everyone gets on the same page when we make decisions.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Do we have any more questions? Well, if not, do you have, what questions would you like to ask us?
You know, my questions are, I'm very curious as to getting an understanding, so I would love to read more and find out sort of the history of, of what this group has been doing, the Historic Resources Commission, that I would very much enjoy, I love homework. Which is a good thing when you go to school a lot. And, and just meeting the other people, I don't know if I have questions until I find out more of, you know, what's on the future, then I probably would have more questions, but I'm, I'm very excited and would love to do it.
Well, I don't know a lot about what they're looking ahead, but I know in the past, they have contributed a lot.
Yeah.
Especially when you see the buildings in downtown Asheville, it's been restored, you know, and when you look at the different, you know, architecture that we have.
It's fantastic.
And we've done an excellent job.
Yes, you have.
Observing it. And that commission has been a big part of that, I do know.
Right, that was, that was part of my interest. I mean, the, the, it's, it's wonderful when people come and visit here to give them a tour because it's, it always surprises people how beautiful the downtown is and how it's, the buildings have, have made it through, thankfully.
Yeah.
And Lamar, you may know, is that plan on our website, I know I read it recently.
I'm not sure, I, I know there's information on our website, but probably get, like she spoke about, get a clear understanding for the folks that are already on that commission. They can probably give a little bit more guidance to what they're actually working for. But I think that information should be, some information should be out there.
Yeah, I've read the website, I think it's more to meet, I'm looking forward, if I get on, to be able to meet everyone and, and sit down and have a chat.
Yeah, they have a pretty extensive plan, I mean, it was like thirty or forty pages, right? So you have read that?
Yes.
Well, thank you again.
Well, thank you, and I deeply apologize for.
We'll be making a decision tonight.
Okay.
And our clerk will follow up with.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you for what you're doing in the community, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
She's, she's well proper.
I think he has something on our original D website, it's the history of slaves and their evacuation of slaves.
Slaves.
Yeah, slaves, so he has information on that as well.
Hey Darren, welcome.
How are you? Hey, thanks for accommodating me, I was telling Stacy that, this is why you have an assistant to put stuff on your counter. I did not tell her.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Darren, as we talked before, you know, we have, have had a, it's been tough in the past finding qualified people to apply for our boards and commissions, although in the last year or so, it's been a lot better. And what we're doing today, this is why we brought you in for the Historic Commission. Wait, I should introduce myself, I'm Al Whitesides, Vice Chair of District One. But what we're doing Darren is bringing you in to interview today for this. And I'll just go ahead and start off with the first question, why did you apply?
My background is a historian, I'm a native of Buncombe County, born and raised here, and I have a deep interest in the preservation of our culture and our history. And I think it's the reason why I do the work that I do as a professional historian in teaching our history. And my work has focused primarily on Asheville and Buncombe County and the history of the state of North Carolina. So there's a deep interest in, in the work that the commission does.
Right.
Hello, I'm Terry Wells, and I'm Commissioner for District One. And thank you so much for being here with us today and for your service to our community. And what do you believe your role is as a community volunteer on a board such as this? And what specific skills and experience beyond those that you just mentioned, also, would you like to contribute?
Okay, I, I'm really sorry, so I had a hard time hearing, okay.
What do you think your role is as a community volunteer on a board such as this? And also, what specific skills and experience beyond those that you just mentioned, would you like to contribute to this board?
I think, you know, especially as a public commission, it is, the, the role of those who are appointed to these, to these positions is really to be the voice of the community, to represent that voice, to ensure that those who, who historically have not had a voice in, in government, even in volunteer commissions like this, that those, those voices are represented. So that's what I see as a primary role of, if I am, am appointed to this position, is to bring that voice of the community, especially, I have a deep passion for those who, once again, who have been historically underrepresented in, in bodies like this. And, and so I would bring that, you know, as, that would be at the heart of the work that I would do on the commission. And also, I just think that my background is a professional historian and a deep passion for this history and for preservation. It's not only doing the intellectual work that historians do, but I've done a lot to help preserve public history as well, which is a really different feel from just the academic pursuit of history itself. So I have a deep understanding of the work that goes into public history and public preservation. So I would think that I would bring a great deal of perspective on that particular part of the work of this commission.
Thank you so much for joining us and applying. Could you just briefly share with us one of your favorite or most meaningful projects you've had the chance to work on? Kind of related to these topics?
Well, you know, Jasmine, that's easy. It is the work, I think the work that we've done for the past seven years at the university going into the eighth year around the African-Americans in Western North Carolina and Southern Appalachian history and the conference that has been created. And I'm proud to say that that work has not only been strongly supported by UNC Asheville, by the university and the faculty and staff there, but it also has received both, I think, both national recognition in a major grant that we were, we received from the Andrew Mellon Foundation. And I was also given an accommodation by Governor Cooper for the work that we've done around that conference. So it, it has been very meaningful because, as you know, about this region of the state that we're in, in this region of the country, in Southern Appalachia, there's always been this kind of assumption that there were no people of color in this region, or if there were, there were too few to have any significant contribute, make any significant contribution to the region. But the conference has uncovered how deep and rich that history has been, and I think that it has galvanized people in the community with a deeper sense of that contribution. So that would be the thing that I would point to as being, work that I have been most proud of.
Thank you for that work and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Dr. Waters, I had a quick question.
Yeah.
That your, your board experience had me think of this. Your, your role with the Z Smith Reynolds Foundation and the Public Arts Council, I just wanted to hear your high-level perspective and thoughts around the purpose of, of public art. You know, our community has a lot, we have a lot of prolific future public spaces in public art, and so.
I'm learning, I'm learning a lot about, you know, I, I'm not an art historian. I have said that, and I think Commissioner Whitesides knows this because he knows my family really well, has watched me grow up. And, you know, I, I told my father after I finished my PhD that if I ever decided to go back to school again to pursue any other degree, he has a right to call the white coats and, and have me committed. But I have developed a deep, deep passion for art history and the role that it plays in helping us to understand, you know, how our society has changed and the role that we have played in, in that change. So I think I've come to have a deep appreciation of public art. So I had the opportunity to participate in the public art initiative here. And, and I think people need to see representations of themselves in their community. And so that project at Z Smith Reynolds, I think, has, has been really intentional about ensuring, again, that largely underrepresented communities and marginalized communities are, can see themselves represented in the public art that we decide to actually, to put up. So I think it plays a fundamental role, role in the sense of belonging to a community.
Great, thank you. And I'm Parker Sloan, Commissioner District Three, nice to meet you.
Okay, nice to meet you as well, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, Darren, do you have any questions of us before?
I don't, I don't, I, I just appreciate this opportunity and again, I appreciate you accommodating me after filling the show up earlier, but thank you for the opportunity just to be in front of you and to talk about my passion for history.
Thank you, and we'll be making the decision tonight, and our clerk will get back with you.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do for the community.
Thank you.
You guys got a meeting to go to, huh?
We gotta go.